Next on the agenda is 173Z Gateway School District. The app is requesting rezoning of property from R1-1 Family Residential to C2 Business Commercial. Property address is 4450 Old William Penn Highway, is known as Allegheny County Lot and Block 855N 105, is approximately 26 acres.
I'm Bob Mitall. I'm an engineer retained by Gateway School District to present this rezoning request to you. With me tonight is the Superintendent of Schools, Bill Short, and also Bob Brown, the Director of Facilities. If I may, the property, as you all, I'm sure, are aware, is at the corner of Moss Side and Old William Penn. Property, and is also bounded by the Parkway East. The surrounding properties are, over in this area, which is shaded green, is L. This is already C2. This color over here is R1. This area back here is R2. And according to the zoning map, this area, basically the intersection, is zoned Conservancy. So we're requesting the rezoning from R1 to C2. Mr. Short will kind of go through the school district's motivation for your benefit.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. As stated earlier, my name is William Short, Superintendent of Schools for the Gateway School District. I have been employed for the Gateway School District for nearly 30 years. So I come to you with a lot of knowledge pertaining to the buildings and operational, organizational, of the structure of the districts. But before us tonight is the application for rezoning of the Gateway Middle School property located at 4450 Old William Penn Highway, seeking an R1 to a C2 classification. By rezoning this property, this will provide options for the district and future school boards to potentially increase the value and opportunities for a potential buyer to acquire the property that is the most valuable asset for the district. Throughout the last 30 years, Gateway School District, like most school districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, has seen a significant drop in enrollment. To highlight this, during the 1970s, Gateway operated 15 school buildings that educated more than 10,000 students between Monroeville and Pitt Karen. Today, the district utilizes seven buildings with an enrollment of nearly 3,400 students. Now, number of factors, and it's complicated to go into that number, but significantly, parents are not having as many children as they did in the 70s and the 60s. And that comes with statistical data. If you could go back to the 70s, a number of parents were averaging more than four children per household. Today, that number is probably less than two. And those decreases in enrollment are substantial in every school district surrounding us here in Monroeville. The current age and condition of our buildings is a concern of the district and ultimately the taxpayers who really own those buildings. Gateway Middle School was constructed in the early 1950s, which places the building close to 65 years of age. Many aspects of the facility will need to be addressed if the district continues to operate that building along with our Moss Side Middle School building, which was formerly known as South Junior High School. To discuss some of those issues, I do have with us the Director of Maintenance, Mr. Bob Brown.
Hi, I'm Robert Brown, Facility Director. Been with the district going on five years now. That building is aged. We have a lot of concerns and future dollars that would have to be invested to maintain that building. There's infrastructure that would really be detrimental to trying to keep that building as it is. You know, underground waste systems and such, that we've had issues in the past and we're fortunate enough to be able to make the repairs. But if it happens in any number or volume, it would be almost impossible with the situation of how that infrastructure has been constructed in those days. So we're looking at that as well as all the normal things, the roofs, the windows, and major costs, just to keep that building compliant and useful for the district. So that's what we're taking into consideration as well. Thank you.
I do have a couple more issues I would like to address. The district must continue to operate in a fiscally responsible manner to the taxpayers while also continuing to educate our students in a modern facility for the 21st century learning skills that we require from our students. The process that is in front of you tonight initiated with several building and grounds meetings over the last 10 years, concluding with board action this past summer to begin acquiring up-to-date surveys, deed information to prepare for the request of rezoning the property. Please understand that this is merely a continuation of a process that has no timetable or application to the Pennsylvania Department of Education to be in formal hearings to close any building within the Gateway School District. School code mandates that a school hearing must commence not less than three months prior to a decision to close a building within the Commonwealth. There are several steps involved within this process and will be followed if and when the district would determine the future of any building or property. As I've stated many times on the air publicly, that Gateway School District, especially Gateway Middle School, will be there next year in operation. This is merely giving an opportunity to the board to look at options for the future in determining whether or not we need to sell an asset to continue to educate our students properly. Thank you.
Just might want to add a few things to the superintendent's comments. And Monroeville, as you all know, has always been a dynamic community. Things change over time. Your zoning ordinance permits public schools in only the R districts or the residential districts. If you look back, this building was built in the 50s. We now have Pennsylvania Department of Transportation shed out here. We have the Parkway. This area all down here has been turned into C2. We have the, I believe it's called the Parkway Building over here. We have Cochran's Collision Center. This is still Good Shepherd Church, and this area over here on the other side of Moss Side is still R1. But this property is pretty much isolated from that because of the highway. So over time, the community has evolved, and this is not really, in our opinion, prime R1 ground anymore. One of the questions that we discussed was the fact that this will continue as a school, and even if the zoning is changed to C2, it would be no different than some of the other properties down here that are zoned commercial but are still residentially used. This would follow along the same lines. This would be a non-conforming use in that district. So we respectfully ask your consideration to rezone the property and try to answer any questions you may have.
Any members of the audience have any questions? Come forward, please.
Should I sign in?
Yes.
I'm Lois Drumheller, and I live in a fairly close community to the middle school. My question has to do with whether or not the elementary schools and the census being low in those, I don't know comparatively how much lower, but I suspect much lower, had you considered consolidating elementary schools into this very valuable property that, when changed commercially and combined with the fact that there is going to be an additional commercial building adjacent to it where that Parkway Building is, and that that intersection is very close to a very busy intersection, probably the second or first busiest in the state, what potential buyers, doesn't seem like you'd have, the motivation is to hopefully see that it's on the tax rolls and, you know, bringing in tax income, but it's an unknown as to what will go there. And the fact that it remains a school and could be consolidated with the elementary grades, had that been considered?
It's a very good question. And yes, we've done extensive studies, the last being in probably 2015, in looking at the possibility of consolidating. At that time, and still with this current board, it is the belief of still having the elementary schools located within their own communities, not losing the idea or relevance of a Ramsey Elementary School within the Ramsey area, University Park within University Park. We have felt that the parents still want those local elementary schools instead of combining them all into one.
Well, that's okay. I appreciate your comment, although I'm sure that when Pitt Karen was leveled and that was combined, that that community was more affected. It strikes me that a lot of this stuff is related to zoning issues, that it was going to be a separate question of mine. Maybe I could take this opportunity to ask whether or not after, I could just ask a question about zoning in particular, because it seems that in rezoning, we have several here to consider rezoning that were on your agenda, that I have a curiosity as far as the actual zoning ordinance is concerned. The last known documentation of that was, I think, April 16th meeting in 2014, which was at that time getting ready, getting into the final draft of being approved. It could be a lot clearer in cases like this if we knew the status of that zoning ordinance overall. And then that might help clarify what the best use, the highest use of this property is. So I asked you two questions. Sorry if I jumped the gun on it, but thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Anybody else?
I don't have questions, but I would like to make comments to the board.
Go ahead.
My name is Charles Bull. I live at 212 Old Haymaker Road. I've lived there for over 70 years. And I have no objection to the Gateway selling the property, but I do have objection as to making it commercial. This intersection is extremely congested a good bit of the day. Any commercial venture that would go into here would just increase that congestion. There's a lot of elderly people that live in the R1 and R2 areas, and this would, I think, produce a burden on them as far as driving in the area. This property was, they tried to make it commercial in the past. I believe they wanted to put a casino in there. And the application, I believe, was denied to rezone it commercial at that time. I have a letter from a couple of residents. Could I read it or just present it to you?
Sure.
This is from John and Joanne Malinoski to the board. They write, "There are many reasons for Planning Commission should turn down this unreasonable request to rezone the property, R1 to C2." The 26 acres where the school sits now. "This change will be a negative effect and a potential unfair effect on the people involved and that live in the vicinity." They enumerate seven points. First, traffic effect would be disastrous. Number two, Route 48 and Old William Penn Highway and Route 48 and Route 22 are presently a traffic nightmare and unable to sustain additional traffic. Point three, Old William Penn Highway, both east and west, and Route 48 cannot be expanded without extreme roadwork. Example, a bridge for the Parkway and Turnpike. Point four, zoning change would create a domino effect. This would affect Clover Drive, the Jeanette property, the Good Shepherd Lutheran Church. Will they also request a change in zoning? Point five, there is no need for a zoning change. An example would be at Glenwood. This is zoned residential and was developed without problems. Point six, the zoning change would create an unreasonable burden for the people living in the neighborhood because of the noise, traffic, and increased crime and decrease in property values. Point seven, finally, the zoning change would not be of benefit to everyone. The reason for this change is money only. This is the reason the school board has requested the zoning change. The property has been turned down in the past for requested zoning changes. This request should be met with an open and not predetermined because of money. Common sense should determine your vote in this matter. Neighbors of the present school do not want this property rezoned to commercial, C2. We have lived on Old Haymaker Road for 49 years. We don't want this change. We don't need this change. There is enough commercial property in Monroeville. Please respect the residents that lived here. Signed, John Malinoski II and Joanne Malinoski. Would you like the letter?
Yes. Give it to the Secretary.
So basically, there's a number of us that would like to see the property not made commercial.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Short.
Thank you, sir.
If you have no plan right now for the rezoning, I mean, for the sale of the property, if you don't have a buyer or anything right now, and I can ask our chair, and I want to correct Lois Drumheller, because the board worked on the zoning ordinance, it was until April of 2015. Would it be better, Mr. Deal? Because that was part of what we were working on, was the zoning map. Would it be better to revisit the zoning ordinance that was being worked on and consider that during that time? Or do we change that in this manner?
That's something to determine by the municipality.
Well, I think it's up to the board what they want to do. If you want to table the application to look at it, you can do so.
Well, I think what was suggested was, she had asked for the status of the zoning ordinance. You know, if we revisit as a Planning Commission to complete that document, because we were also updating the entire zoning map, which included all that property. So I'm not sure. I'm looking for some direction on what would be the best thing to consider. I think it's something that, you know, the sooner we revisit it, the better.
You're talking about the zoning ordinance that we had spent that time on?
All that time, years on.
It was a lot of time.
Before you came, many nights in that back room, they're working on it. So, you know, I think that there's, is it a better time to revisit that and get that ordinance going and complete it instead of rushing and doing this rezoning tonight and then somebody else come next week or the following week and we find ourselves in the same situation?
It could be an indefinite timeframe, though. That's been sitting there undone.
But it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be. It was a staffing issue, correct, Mr. Little?
I can tell you the zoning ordinance will not be addressed until at least the winter time of next year.
And what would the reason be since we have staff now?
We're not up to speed for it yet, Georgiana. I told you, our obligations take care of the day-to-day operations.
Right. And that's why I'm saying we had hired two consultants, and the consultants were working with the Planning Commission, and we were working in the evening with the zoning officer. And, you know, we were pretty much complete, and it was ready to go to the public for comments. So I don't think it would be, you know, require that much more.
Well, would for the current zoning officer to get up to speed on the changes of it, it would.
Well, I just think the sooner the better. And, you know, to have it later, after all this time and money was put into it, is, you know, it's not fair to the taxpayers. It's not fair to...
It's not fair to the zoning officer to have a document that he has to explain, not under the Planning Commission but the council, when he's not prepared to do that. That's not fair to him.
Well, as I said, you know, the sooner it's addressed, I think, the better.
I don't disagree, but, you know, the fact of the matter is there's not time.
Because it was a staffing issue, you know, Mr. Little, you would agree it was a staffing issue and they were fully staffed.
Tim Little, our municipal manager, you know, just as a comment, what Paul Hugis is saying is absolutely correct. And Georgiana, you're correct. And usually, you know, the truth lies in the middle somewhere. The zoning ordinance is, my understanding, was given to the Planning Commission, and you two correct me if I'm wrong as I move along here, was given to the Planning Commission and was, the Planning Commission offered comments, and the Planning Commission was going to forward it to council. Am I correct?
Well, the Planning Commission hired a consultant.
Correct.
It was from 2006 into 2010 is when the Modernization Committee worked on it, set the foundation, did all the research, set the foundation, and then it went to the Planning Commission in 2010.
Well, anyway, suffice it to say, let's say for the sake of conversation, that it was ready to move on to council, all right? For the sake of this request for a rezoning, I don't believe, and I agree with Paul, that the rezoning ordinance is going to be completed before you make a decision on this rezoning. I mean, I just don't see that as being possible. Now, the only way you're going to get the rezoning ordinance, and we'll be talking about this at the budget hearings, is to have an outside consultant like we had Lee Mueller, who was hired in 2011. Staff, as Paul is saying, staff is not equipped right now to handle, even though it may be completed, with respect to, let's say, in a draft, ready to hand to council, and we don't even definitely know that yet.
Well, it was actually to go to the public for public comment.
Right. And trust me, I've been through revising a zoning ordinance twice in my career, and that is a very long and arduous process, as you well know, Georgiana, and anybody who's worked on it, in two different communities that are about the eighth of the size of It took two years, and that was, you know, really, now, the ball's been dropped here because of different things that happened with different councils moving on and off. But my suspicion would be that the Planning Commission would look at it again, and you have totally different Planning Commission members that may have different ideas and different recommendations. Then they're going to have to look at it. That would take some time. And then, as you mentioned, Georgiana, it would have to have public comment. So when you have a lot of people involved in a public process, which is our democratic way of life, then you're going to have a lot of comment, and it takes a lot of time. So just as, to wrap up my comment, my recommendation to the Planning Commission is, if you want more time to study this, is to table it, but I would not wait for the zoning ordinance to be completed. Now, with that being said, what Mrs. Drumheller said, you know, has some validity to it because, you know, if it was completed, yeah, you would be able to have a better idea of not just this parcel of property, but that whole region, we'll call it, you know, from a comprehensive standpoint, you know, is what you want. But to be fair to the people requesting the zoning ordinance, I think what you have to look at here is, what do you want to see on that piece of property? That's, as residents, as public officials of the community, you have to ask yourself that question. What do you want to see there? Wave a magic wand. What do you want to see there? You have an opportunity to rezone that property, and I think that's what you have to have in your mind right now in recommending to council what you want to see there, and take it from there. Start with a comprehensive idea and work with the two Pauls over there, and then what you want to see there. I mean, you know, maybe it's C2, maybe it's something else. And that's all I have for my comment, okay?
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? You already spoke. Anybody else?
We understand that rezonings are always tough. There's pros and cons, and I too have been through several rezonings for different communities. And one thing I will say, that the day after you pass whatever your new zoning ordinance is, there's going to be somebody out there that's going to be contemplating coming to you and asking for a rezoning, whether they do or not, but I guarantee the thought will be in their head, because this is a dynamic community. You change over the years, you know. I look back and have seen many, many things that have changed, the character of the neighborhoods have changed, character of Route 22 has changed. This is only part of that, because who would have thunk, you know, many years ago that this would be the center of activity that it is in terms of traffic? The gentleman that pointed out, yes, there are traffic issues, but you are experienced at this now, and you know that any new use that comes in here, you know, the two Pauls, their consultants are going to require them to do traffic studies and all, whatever the use may be. And if you look at your zoning ordinance, and I'm sure you all have, the list in C2 is lengthy. So it could be anything. It could even be a mixed use. So I just want to make those comments to you. Whoever comes in here has a lot of work to do. This is only a small part of it.
Historically speaking, researching the whole deed transfer, initially it was part of patent township. And this building and the property extended the whole way across the Parkway that was put in place. Gateway actually owns a piece of property which is currently behind the new Starbucks that was put on 22. A lot of people don't realize that, that that's how old this property was. And at the time, understanding that it was patent township...
time, understanding that it was patent township, meaning students attended school through the eighth grade in Monroeville at that time, then had to choose either Pitt Karen High School, Turtle Creek High School, or an alternative education or just move on to work. Times have changed. This is 70 years later. Enrollment has decreased. We have aging facilities. You know, respectfully, I don't know the details of the zoning procedures and respectfully to Mrs. Drumheller, the history, but, you know, we're operating under the auspice of the rules that are in place now and that's why we're presenting to the board tonight this information.
Ready for a motion, Mr. J?
I have a question too. Mr. Short?
Yes.
I'm just curious, like, what was the thought given or what was the process that led the group to decide C2 versus either of the other two commercial districts?
My understanding was to give us more options down the road. If the property is rezoned potentially, you know, words change. I think everyone knows that. A new school board may come in and decide, we may not want to do anything if it's rezoned. However, this was provided to us to provide, give us the best opportunity for value.
Mr. Short, if you're not doing anything with it now...
Correct.
Why get it rezoned? Why not leave it alone, utilize the school? I understand the maintenance aspect of it and the infrastructure, about 65 years, yeah, that's a long time. There's upgrades. You've upgraded the building throughout the years. Your maintenance has been maintained throughout the years. But where would you be relocating these children? What other 26 area plot do we have in Monroeville that the school or Gateway owns that you would put it?
We have a plan already developed in case we would have to move to PDE for closing a building. Those plans are in place. We've discussed those with the school board. We've discussed those openly in public. I think it's preemptive at this point to determine if we plan on selling that building. I don't make that call. Ultimately, it's the nine members of the board that would do so.
Like I said, you do not have any plans to put in another school or put in another facility?
On that property, correct.
On that, why not on that property? Why not update, put in, you have 26 acres that you could probably put a facility right there while the kids are still in school.
Part of my statements earlier indicated the drop in enrollment from 10,000 students in the 70s where we had 15 buildings...
Right.
...to seven buildings now. When you look at our Gateway campus, we have a 9 to 12 high school that was recently renovated and remodeled, investing nearly $35 million 10 years ago. State-of-the-art building. Those of you who have been inside, it's wonderful. We have remodeled and redeveloped Cleveland Stewart Elementary, which is right there on campus. We currently have Moss Side Middle School, which was a former South Junior High School. That in itself is an aging building. So, the idea would be eventually to house everything on Gateway campus. It only makes sense.
Well, your statistics with the reduction in the school enrollment, all right, that's right now. You can't speak for...
Absolutely.
...what is in the future. Ultimately, there's a lot of young people getting married, moving into the area, working here in Monroeville, live here. I can't speak for...
We've already planned for that.
I understand you've planned for that, but the rezoning of this property at this point right now, to me, makes not a lot of sense at this point. I could see if you were anticipating putting something somewhere else. This was a cash issue with respect to your equity in here goes to equity here. The taxpayers, which we all are, do not burden it, fill that burden until you finalize what you need to do.
And I can't look into a crystal ball to see who and what would be willing to even purchase that property. However, if and when that opportunity comes, the administration of the Gateway School District is prepared to move forward with the plan to not only educate our students in a sound, modern facility, but also offer, you know, every educational feature that's demanded of a 21st century student without really utilizing that piece of property.
And again, then why change the zoning?
To get the value.
You have the value, it's not valuable unless you sell it.
As I stated earlier...
Ultimately, is what your plan is.
Absolutely.
So, you would ultimately have to put another facility on the main campus where Gateway's at, that's my understanding of your statement.
We currently have a facility, just keep this in mind, in the 70s and the 80s, South Junior High School had grades seven, eight, and nine. Monroeville North, which is Gateway Middle School, had grades seven, eight, and nine. Both buildings at that time housed nearly, we'll say, 1,200, 1,300 students in each facility. Our high school right now only has 1,100 students. These two buildings have roughly 500 students compared with 1,200 students. So, do the math.
I understand you have a reduction in attendance, or not attendance, but enrollment.
The campus allows enough space to add second floors, tracks, fields, everything that's needed for a comprehensive education on the Gateway campus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's nothing else? I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of 173-Z for the Gateway School District.
For a second?
I'll second.
Sharon Roque, please.
Mr. Dill?
Aye.
Mr. Biondo?
Aye.
Mr. Merganti?
Aye.
Ms. Kirkduff?
Aye.
Mrs. Woodhall?
I'm staying.
Mr. Picusa?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
I'm staying.
Yeah.
Well, it is...
Five affirmative, two extension. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'm going to release these are my decisions for you.
Yes.